All right, this is a special city council meeting. It's Thursday, February the eighth at five thirty. So with that. Paul? I'm here. Paul? Here's your. Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Counselor Richards?
Here.
And, um. What else? Sure, right. She was coming in. She was.
You said the weather?
The weather.
Oh, yeah.
Renee, can you hear us?
We don't hear.
He's silent there?
Yeah, she's silent.
Okay. All right. Hopefully we have anybody else coming on, but if you see it, admit it there, let me know.
Okay. Is she supposed?
What's wrong with that one being not? Did we miss this one over here? Right on.
We need to turn this up.
Uh, you can.
I mean, that way at least we can see what's going on.
It's underneath, right in the middle. Below that red light.
Yeah, that way at least I can kind of watch.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, the first thing is, um, we have two items. One is the city council vacancy interview. Herb is not able to join us. I did check with Mike, our city attorney. Because he was the only one interviewing, we could appoint him. Vacancy as well, just being one, so.
I make a motion to appoint him.
Second. I did talk to him a little bit today.
Oh, okay.
And I figured we would actually be assigning him the position in February. So I know he's gonna be gone through February, so I was figuring he'd be starting in March. It would be to come to that meeting, so we're in.
Yeah. Okay. Looking at the committee assignments, which are allotted in place, but the one option might be is they're filling the role of the alternative for the first responders. You're the councilor, Jim was the alternative.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
No, you were the alternative.
Yeah, I was the alternative.
Okay, I'm the one that's fire, so. It was Jim is the first responder, alternative.
Oh, okay.
It's Jim R., yeah.
Oh, I thought that was it.
Fire and Jim P., okay.
You're the fire department.
Fire, no, I'm fire.
He's fire department.
I'm fire.
And I was supposed to be the.
First responder.
For first responders, but you're the alternate first responder.
Yeah, I'm the alternate. So Herb would be alternate.
Yeah.
Right?
Or first responder.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Probably hurt for him, Jim, and I had to go to the couple of.
So I think it's right.
Absolutely. It's going on soon.
Yeah, absolutely. As being backups, you can go any of that stuff like there is, so.
All right, so we'll reassign, or we'll assign him to the first responders alternative. Do you want to add that to the motion? So what's.
So I'll make a motion that.
Firmly amend motion.
Or amend the motion that Herb, as the new council member, will serve as the alternate for his first responders.
Second. Any other comments? Say none, all those in favor? So you're probably saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same. Aye. Super. Spiders. They wouldn't go in here. Well, that guy is our CMS contract. And we have Tom here to, you know, make a couple of comments. We've had the opportunity to read the contract. That's why it was table till tonight, so.
Okay.
I just have, you want to say any comments, or I can?
I don't know. I didn't have anything canned here. I guess I've been working with enough folks here. I think that I've kind of walked it through the folks that have had questions, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have, so.
I had an editorial comment on page, off the page nine, an email address.
So. Your comment, let's add to your comment, but I was curious, who wrote the contract? I have no idea who wrote it. Stay right there, certainly, I guess. Or the CMS, or Jim, excuse me, Mike, and back and forth.
So we had something in our proposal that showed what our proposed language would be, and then the city attorney went through it. We had a few bounce backs and forth. Most of it was about intellectual property and what would be the city's property here. That was one of the things we bounced back and forth on, and we came to an agreement on anything that would be a report, a work product would be the city's. Anything that had any intellectual property like formulas and the Excel spreadsheets would remain, would remain ours. It would be part of our intellectual property. Once we earned that out, we were both in agreement. And you have in front of you what we have agreed on.
So if you got, you mentioned your comment.
No, that was my one comment. I think a couple were just.
Okay.
The comments or?
Oh, the email that's open, okay, I see that.
You're talking about intellectual property, Tom.
Yeah.
You're talking about a spreadsheet. Are you talking about stuff that has been inspected and we don't know where that's at on that, or?
No, more from a general clause standpoint, just the, what we get concerned about is when the cities are subject to data practices requests. And that can get start to dig deep down into more than just a work product is into, there's electronic files piece in there, like, hang on, where does that stop? So we have things like Excel spreadsheets that might have formulas in here that would generate calculations that a lot of work goes into. Just in an example, CAD files, you know, they have the different calculations in the background that have got to be out, then from a data practice standpoint, then our competitive advantage goes away.
What kind of data are we talking about?
Well, um, in particular, I mean, it's a clause that we just have from a corporation standpoint, but in particular, how it relates to building permits, it would be, it would be down to Excel spreadsheets.
I mean, but what's on the spreadsheet? You're talking data, is it?
Calculations.
Is it city data?
No.
Is it data within your own organization, or?
Or just how to stay competitive and saying, how are we going to calculate? Well, it's probably silly here, but how are we going to calculate a formula here that's relating to a fee, a fee schedule here that's part of our appendix A here, for instance? So we went into specific analysis on, on what it costs in different levels of a permit fee. And getting kind of deep, what you're asking here is, as the price of a project goes up, it's not the same percentage of fee of a construction schedule to be able to charge the same permit fee for what it takes to administer that. Said in layman's terms is, if it's a $10 million project, the fee schedule shouldn't be a percentage of 10 million. That percent should go down as a project gets older because we're going to be on site the same amount of time inspecting more framing. So we've done a ton of calculations on saying, how can we offer that level and that band for a more competitive price? And what's the data that we came up with that allows us to do that?
So it's kind of your, your analysis that comes up, that you use to come up with whatever calculation?
Yes, yep. And this is more of the philosophical type thing in the contract language, just saying, we have, we have no problems giving you a work product. We just want to reserve anything that we might have used to determine calculations. And so it's a standard type of clause that we have for, we use it more in our engineering side of the company of saying, these CAD files, there's a lot of work that comes into here, and we just don't give those. There's standards, there's layers. Another consulting firm get ahold of that, and then all the work that we put into that is now theirs. That makes more sense.
And just for reference, what part of the contract or page or?
Well, I have no particular page. He mentioned, he mentioned, he mentioned the spreadsheet. And I just want to know, what kind of data he's talking? Is it, is it, is it, are the data for population of putting this type of?
Yeah, 'cause I mean, some of the stuff could be, you know, we were getting a spreadsheet at one point in time that had all the permits, so we were able to take a look at all those permits, what was going on, where it was at, that we really like for planning and zoning, being able to keep track of that stuff. Otherwise, things kind of go awry. And appendix two, I didn't get any of that stuff that was included in my packet for the appendices.
There would be appendix two, I guess I.
Yeah, I do see that. What Nate put in your packet, there's that in appendix, but it's, that's part of what the B schedule was for a calculation about how we determined what the B schedule would be for Plainview.
Asset rounds. And we brought one copy.
Okay, so that was the one that you were looking at for that? Okay, I, there was a prior one that we had gotten, that one that was in our packet this time, that turned around that had this. So I mean, that one I picked up from the one from last month, or whatever it was that was in there, that was not in this one. So here, around if you need that, we can kind of take a look and pass that around. There was something in particular that really drew my attention, and it's to me, a little bit of, of a concern and a sore subject. You and I have already had some discussions over time. And on your building permit fees, you have manufactured home on Pierce or Block Foundation.
Yes.
I got a problem with that. Real problem. Okay, and it's also what's going on right now in the city on one of those properties that got there. It is not in our, out of our code. You and I have been through that. Okay, I, the answer is, is no to that, on being a part of it, okay? And it's in our, in our code book, that should not be here, okay?
Sure.
And you, I know you caught it, okay? And still, it was approved by prior administration without looking at the code of what there was and not being allowed and permitted in the city.
Sure.
I think I know where you're going with that, Jim, is that this, this fee schedule in the appendix would be if there is going to be a manufactured home allowed, here's what the install fee would be. It's just a fee schedule. It doesn't say it's permissible. Does that make?
Because I mean, I've just, I've really got a problem with that, okay?
And in there, if we can't do it, if it's not.
No mobile homes inside of Ornoco period?
Right, I mean.
No mobile, only in an established manufactured mobile home park. Okay, that's, that's it. There are no established mobile home parks in Ornoco.
Gotcha. But it's in our ordinance to have one.
No, it is not. No, it is not. That's, that's where this whole thing happened.
Well, that's.
Totally wrong on that one.
Different discussion here, as far as what the fee is.
Yeah, no, I'm just, it's, it's, it's in our ordinance not to have one. It's that, read it. It's one five one point. Let's see if I have it there.
I guess, I'll just make a point to that.
Yeah.
My feeling is, if we can't do it, I would rather it not be in the schedule, because then it could be interpreted that you could.
Absolutely.
If it's in the schedule.
So you bring up a great point that's worth dissecting here, is what's in the agreement is not what's published as a fee schedule. And so normally, that, that, that's just what the fee schedule, our agreement would be as an appendix. If, and some, some cities have actually asked us to create a web-friendly version of a fee schedule of what this is, and we've parsed it out and it's something you can put on your website. And so one of the things that has, we've been fleshing this out here, is you're going to notice on the appendix A, fee schedule here is an escrow. What we've been getting more feedback on is about, I actually don't know the numbers, it's just a 10 and 1/2 are preferring to collect a deposit or an escrow, and others are not. And so that's one of the things that's in the agreement, is how do you actually want to have your fee schedule published?
So this escrow would be financed by the, by the permit E, or whatever you call it?
Yes, the applicant. Now, the purpose of that is, is to be able to have some incentive to be able to close a permit out. Other ways that we're actually kind of handling that is some language in the agreement that says, we want to administratively close out a permit if they don't, if they don't finish their project within X amount of time. Default is a year and a half. No, default six months, excuse me. We'll allow, in our contract, what we're proposing is, is as you're building official expert, we will make the determination up to a year and a half on how long our company can take.
I mean, that was a long time, I saw that in there, and the amount of months that you're looking at for that one.
Yep, and some projects won't take that long. If they're a multimillion dollar house, it's, happens quite often. A commercial project, year and a half. Usually, commercial projects are the kind that end up coming in front of council anyway, but that's what we're saying, is we're the professional judge for saying, this project should take a year, year and a half. Anything more than a year and a half would take council approval. But we are, we are putting that limit in here and saying, you can request up to, up to a year and a half. We'll make the call on how long that should take, and then we'll put an expiration date on the permit. If you don't get your permit closed out by then, you would forfeit your escrow. That's what that's there for.
Motivation.
Motivation. There's a loophole, if you will, in the state code that says you just have to work on a permit every six, you have to do some sort of work within five and a half months. So somebody technically, if they're savvy, want to be that person, then they could work on something every five months and extend the permit for imperperatuality. And so this is the process here to stop, to stop that.
Okay, and the rest of it, you were talking about reviews being within 16 hours, you know, with different phases that there are in number 15, okay, on, you know, plan review permits. Okay, I know that, that's been an issue that there has for, from what I've heard, okay? I haven't been directly involved with that, but that's been a delay, especially with what's coming in here this, this coming few months.
Yes.
We're gonna have a lot of stuff that's, that's going on, and I know these contractors are gonna have to do it and work with that. So, you know, out of curiosity, if we're hooking up a water line that's, that's to a new water, going into, and that's there right now, so it's a new water line going in, how many times do you inspect the new water line?
Um, you're talking about your phase one A stuff here, I assume, right? The water lines coming in from the water project?
Yeah, well, I'm talking about what's over in Northwest Part Two, you know, on, if the resident turns around and wants to get a permit to put in the water. Is there going to be one time that you're going to be making an inspection on that at the meter, or how many times are you going to be coming for that?
Only visits.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, and so the answer is, it's not complicated, but it depends. If there's a, if you're cutting into an existing water line, then it's a two-step process here, because you're going to have to come intercept, going to have to test if there's a pressure test that, make sure that connection is solid. The city, working with Kane here, their concern is, is that they're gonna connect up a new water line to an old water line, and we have to find out before it hits the meter that if there's a leak or not. Code says we only have to check the new line, and so we had to work through kind of a special process that says, yep, we're, we understand the contractor's only responsible for the new water line, but if we find a leak somewhere between where that connects to the old line and the meter here, we're still going to have to find it, and then it's not the contractor's responsibility to fix it, it's the homeowner's responsibility to fix it. So it gets a touch nuanced when you're cutting into a new line, so.
Because if, if I look at this right, okay, the lines that are existing in the homes now, okay, don't have a meter that's connected to them anyway, okay? So you're going to be putting a meter that's going to be going from the new line to the meter, okay? And from that point on, it should be the responsibility of the homeowner. I'm not questioning about that.
There's a, there's a difference there, Jim, that I'd like to back you up on, is some of that line might be cut into the existing line and not coming into the house.
What are you talking about?
But you still have to, with us, have to buy a new water meter.
Yes.
And that new water meter is not going to be in the middle of a yard, it's going to be in the house.
Exactly.
Okay, so you're going to be taking all that existing old line out to get to put where the meter is, where it connects to that meter.
Yes.
So it wouldn't really have anything that would be there for an old line, because it's got to be connected to the meter, which is going to be installed in the house.
Our water system is 10 years old. There virtually are no old lines.
No, 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 I'm talking about the new ones.
There's a process that has been clearly identified between Tom and Kane that we're giving out to residents right now, and it's in a form that we have in the office that we give out whenever they apply for a water line excavation or a water meter installation. So those, they spend a lot of detail and time in meetings of working out that process of who's going to do what. And so it's very clear to the homeowner. Homeowner has a responsibility for calling the inspection.
Right.
Getting a meter, calling City Hall and everything, so that's.
And I agree with that. I'm just wondering, okay, is there going to be an inspection when we turn around as a city and put that line that there is when we dig the trench, or however we're doing it, okay, that I don't want to have our residents have to be inspected three or four times? Then I would like to have it where it's only one time when it comes to that, just to make it expedient and less cost that there is for the city and for the resident.
Like much everything, it depends on cost and schedule. If, if the homeowner is, primary concern would be the schedule, they could run a new line, sorry, a new line all the way into the meter.
Well, they, they will be, okay, because it's coming from our new line that there is, so that's all going to be new to the meter.
That's, that's actually the distinction I was trying to make, is that's not the case all the time.
You could stub on, because they're like mine.
But you still have to turn around and put a meter in the house.
I think, I think what Tom is referring to.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Is, I'm just pointing out one house in particular, the house across the street here, where the well was, they pulled the wells, the runoff was right there, they hooked onto that line, went in the house, installed the meter in the house.
Right.
So that, so they had.
Okay, you know, I'm looking at everything being to gold.
They didn't have to run a line out in the house.
Okay.
That's where Tom showed.
That's, yeah, that's where I'm trying, because I'm trying to make it where it makes sense, especially with the number of inspections we have coming. So the water is one, and the sewer, you know, off of that. Help me with that, on how many inspections it's going to take for that, so.
Yep, so if the, if time is of urgency, what we're, what we're asking folks to do is come get your water meter, have it installed on, inside your house to your old line, and then when they make the connection, we'll make a pressure test at the meter. And if all goes well, then old line and new line passes, everybody's good. We flush it, we put the backflow protectors on when it's needed, and there's only one inspection. If there's a failure somewhere, we have to unconnect the new, test if it's at the new to the curb stop where the contractor is responsible for, and have them fix it if it's their issue. If it passes there, we have to turn around and tell the homeowner, you have an issue. Now you have to pull a new permit to be able to come and check this out and do your excavation to get this here. Unless they want to pull it out and make this all brand new, then they, they have to dig all the way to their foundation line and install brand new water all the way in. That's the new ones, if that makes sense.
So, and, and I understand that, okay? Here's another question along with that, okay? The homeowner, you know, is making a phone call, okay? They've turned off their water to their house, okay? You know, they're waiting to hook this up, okay? What assurance do they have that they're not going to be without water for two or three days?
Their assurance is directly related to if they're going to have a leak in their old water line or not. The cities, we're here to protect the city's interests as well, and the city is, has a super interest in protecting other residents in here. And if there's a leak, what there's concern is back contamination into the water system here, we've got to figure it out, so it would, it would be delayed until they found where that leak is at.
But I'm just saying, as a norm.
Yes, norm.
Okay, everything goes right, the person calls up, okay, and, and he's got the water meter. Are you going to be there with, within that timeframe that you say of 16 hours, or what are you going to be for that person?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, because again, you don't want those residents to be out of water for a couple days, waiting for, you know, an inspection to take.
16 business hours, that's two days.
And it's two days.
Now, what we're saying is, we are guaranteeing a time if you call us two days ahead of time. That's what that is saying. Guaranteeing, nine times out of 10, we're, we're able to get there the very next day. But what our agreement is saying is that if you give us two days of time, you will be no longer than two days out from, if you, if you plan your stuff accordingly, we'll be there guaranteed within two days.
And that's up to the homeowner.
Correct.
Yeah, they've got to make that call. Oh, yeah.
There's a lot of responsibility in the homeowner.
Make that call.
To make that call.
Whoever pulled the permit has to call us, so the homeowner would be best served, in my opinion, to put that responsibility on their excavator, to pull the permit, do the communication with us. They're, they're the ones that are used to working in the industry, which the homeowner is allowed to pull the permit themselves, but that, that's completely up to them.
I'm just trying to make everything go smooth for what we have working coming out this year, of what's going on, and to make sure that we get the inspections on a timely basis.
There's been discussions, monthly meetings about the process, so.
And, and, okay, so.
Yep.
Okay, sewer.
Comments about the contract.
Sewer. Same timeframe that you're looking at for sewer, how's that going to be for?
Completely, so the contractor that knows what they're doing would be able to get that done at the exact same time. You know, so what our commitment is, is if you call us within two days, you are guaranteed an inspection within two days. Ninety, probably 95% of the time, we're able to get there the very next day. We have, in these situations here, where there's some plumbing code things here that are on, on the horizon, that the state is, is interpreting the plumbing code here for our master plumber, but we are taking those steps here where we're going to make that two-day commitment.
Most of these people putting this, doing this contract work could be master plumbers anyway, aren't they?
Oh, yes, yep, well. They're, they're working underneath a master plumber.
Well, yes, there's a master plumber.
I know you're doing some in-house training.
Yes.
They explained to us, so there's more than just one master plumber within CMS.
Correct. I mean, these are the questions that, you know, I'm just kind of looking at, okay, you said you were going to go with, with a web-based system too coming up? Is that what I understand? Okay, how far away is that, that one?
That web-based system is the one that Renee is aware of, that we have in-house already.
Okay, you have it in there, okay, then that's the stuff that I wasn't aware that was there, so.
That's our database, correct?
What's that?
That's our database, right? Cities.
It's the software that we have, I'm, we have an account with iWorks. iWorks, yeah.
I just don't want to be giving away our database to somebody who's not going to share their, share their database with us. I don't want to be giving them information either, if that's the case.
No, there's.
Just to be honest.
You can have access. You'll have access to our, so the way iWorks will, will work here is, we're getting fairly technical here, is for most users, you won't even know you're in a separate database. It'll be a web face here where you just click on. From our standpoint, we're working in this jurisdiction, we're working.
You have an interface between the two.
We do.
Okay, issuing a temporary certificate of occupancy. Um, I, I understand where you want to go with that. I guess that in some ways, I have some concerns with, with some properties that there are in the city that have skirted ways around things, okay? And issuance of that would, would not be, to me, acceptable, you know, for planning and zoning, or for what there is off of that. Do we have a way to know before you give that out, to see if it would be okay?
Oh, sure, sure, we can always check in. That, that's, the reason I put it in the agreement is I wanted to call it to attention and for a discussion.
And then again, you and I have had, we. And then again, you and I have had, we understand where we're coming from, and, and I just wanna do things right, okay? Of what there is for, for code is where we're writing this and.
And, and as you think about that escrow, why you might wanna implement that is would be, that, that's actually one of the huge areas that this is trying to close out is folks being in their house, it's livable conditions, we've let them be there, it can expire, what's to really incentivize them there if they're gonna be there long term? You need it when you go to sell it, but that could be a while again. And so, once we issue that temporary, of temporary certificate of occupancy, the pressure is off. So that's why we want that escrow.
But, but we could at least be notified when you're gonna do that, before you do that, okay?
Yep.
I mean, that's all I'm asking, okay, and it's a safeguard because of what's happened in the past, you know, on, on these issues, just to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Yes. And, and as a, when we worked for hourly rates for cities and, and Orinoco is on the leading edge of working on the percent of fee, but hourly rate, um, customers really felt that sting, if you will, of us trying to administer closing out a permit cause we work by the hour. And I'm not hiding it in the lease and saying, some of the language in here, why we, we're anxious to close it out is we, we've, we've collected the fee here and we have to administer this, we want it closed out. And just as much as you guys want it closed out.
One question I have, kind of on that, you had mentioned earlier, you know, how a permit can extend and, and put in the incentive days on that. Is that in that shared system? So Renee can pull it and give it to P and Z and say, hey, these things are coming up, I think would be good. So if it's the same system, that's a good.
All, all we want is information.
Yep.
Okay, and then it's good for you, it's good for us, and everybody wins.
If, if you read all a hundred and eighteen pages of that proposal, we were big on that, is transparency.
Well, I didn't, we didn't get to a hundred and eighteen, we only got.
They never got twenty, that never made it to you?
No. No, he's got twenty.
Okay, I thought in an earlier packet it might have gotten to. So we, we went through a great deal of work of talking and interviewing, what are your pain points in the cities? And we went through and crafted, here's how we're tackling them. And so we've pretty much hit those of what the pain points were and why we've addressed those in those, in that contract language.
All right, there's no other comments, I, I'll make a motion that we approve the CMS contract as proposed.
I'll second.
Do we have any, do we have any other, uh, discussion? Do we have any?
Discussion.
I don't know who formulates the, um, if you don't mind me interrupting, who formulates this? Most cities that I've worked with here, they make a motion to say, not as proposed, but at, in, if, if there's any last minute things that you might catch, minor changes, working with your attorney, your attorney's seen it. Um, I'm, I have no objection as proposed, I'm just giving some guidance on what I've seen as.
So if we see something else, we can bring it to your attention and, and we'll still be okay to be able to deal with that or way through it.
I am not here to be an attorney and beat you guys up, we're here to build relationships.
I'm the new kid on the block. And I'm curious, this is the only proposal, we don't have two or three proposals, or you're the only people around to do inspections? What's the county do and what, what do other places do?
There was, just some background, we have looked at other companies and, uh, the one thing that Tom was aware of, and it's in the contract, uh, there is a sixty day termination, uh, going forward, if we feel there's other things or other agencies out there, make sure, look at those. There's some challenges with going with other, um, companies, mainly from the standpoint of, um, uh, these other companies having a, or other building services having a master plumber. A lot of the other contracts that we've looked at, uh, don't have a master plumber. That's, not that that can be worked out, but it doesn't come as hard as the realization that what CMS offers is with the master plumber, so.
And I think with what we've got coming up, that's gonna be critical to be able to do that, to handle those things, which is, I mean, we've got a lot coming, as you know.
And the other, the other ob, not obstacle, but challenge we have is with limited staff, we just didn't have time to look at all those proposals in a timely fashion. And right now, Tom's been graciously working with us without a contract for the last month and a half now, so.
We, we are here, I mean, contracts, I put that sixty day out on purpose, is if, if we're not performing to what you need, talk to me, cause I'm gonna fix it, if I don't fix it, then get rid of this. No, I, I.
Well, that, that conduit too to Tom is really through Renee as much as possible, through city staff, so. Any other comments?
I'd like to make a different motion.
What's that?
I said I'd like to make a different motion, but there's one on the table, so.
Okay. Uh, with that, um, all in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, oppose?
No.
I'll go with aye, cause you got a second.
I am, yeah.
I'm opposed to. Three ayes and one nay.
Right.
Uh, the motion's approved, and, um, congratulations, Adam.
What was your other, your other motion, I think on the table, I apologize.
It's got, it just not approved. It's been approved, so.
It's got approved, so. All right. Our last item on our agenda, so.
And, and communication is utmost.
Absolutely. When you close the session here, I guess I would might asking concerns.
My concern is, is we just put a proposal to the city, and you make all of our residents pay for something, and we never took a second option to, to view it and review, review what the other options were, and other expenses could be through somebody else. We took a non-competitive bid.
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing, I, I thought we looked at the county and I have.
I thought that there were a total of three, was, was, wasn't there another one too besides the county?
We have looked at other options, however, there were some concerns. So we had asked at the last meeting for you to go ahead with CMS temporarily until we could get some of those other questions answered, and at that time, bring back the other proposals.
Okay, that's, that's fair.
Uh, Renee?
Yeah?
Ask you to, for, for, until the sixty days are up, ask you to have to set the agenda for review each month until we, to make sure that everything's up to, up to par what we think we need. I guess I don't know.
We can.
Cause I don't really know what I'm asking, but I think it should be discussed.
Off the commentary, is this called, I mean, I don't wanna be, one, things to consider here is proposals are intensive for everybody. And reviewing them and comparing apples to apples is a ton more trickier than you may think. And so going through that process, I would do that as often as you feel necessary, but I wouldn't do it often. Cause it is, it's labor intensive for everybody to be able to come through and try and compare it. So I, I totally respect where you're coming from here. Um, but we've, we've been through this and just to come and say every two months, we wanna keep doing this as well, would be pretty hard for us to.
Yeah, I, I know that you've gone through some growing pains too, o, over this, and, and, um, that happens, okay? We just wanna be on the plus side, not go through more growing pains, okay?
Yeah, yeah, and I, I've, I've made a pledge and a promise of, if you guys know my background here, is that I have dug deep into making us the best company we can be. And, uh, another construction season, you're gonna, you're gonna be very happy with us, I'm, I'm sure of it. But that's totally your call, guys, I mean, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to sound a salesman, and that's why I put everything on the table is if you, if you feel there's something that we need to change, get ahold of me and you will see a response from us.
Okay, very good. All right. All right, all right, we wanna close the session, uh, oh, I make a motion to adjourn.
Jim?
Second.
Yeah, Jim, I'll, I'll, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. You're adjourned at six, uh, twelve.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, and, and, and thanks, thanks for your honesty and, and everything, and, and I really appreciate the time you and I had a chance to sit down, okay, and, and talk a little bit more, so.
Anytime, that's my job, and don't get out of the company, as it gets to me.
I'm, I got your card.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, we bet, see you, guys.
I'm gonna turn to another contract. Hope you left another speaking, appendix A.